What is that right in the middle? Oh, good.
All right, you were good and live.
The first thing we're going to have is a pledge of allegiance to the fight.
Pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America into a republic which stands one nation under God into his law with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing we're going to have is a roll call. Hang on. Chairman Ames?
President.
Commissioner Bees, here. Commissioner Carlson?
Here.
Commissioner Hopla?
Here.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Here.
Commissioner Perrell?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Thelon?
Present.
City Planner Cindy Nash?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Natalie Johnson?
Here.
Administrative Assistant Chris Riley?
Here.
And Scott Lanier, City Administrator. Roll calls completed or something. Okay, the next thing we're going to do is have our elections for officers and we're going to do this by a roll call vote. It has to be public or it has to be so the public can see it and everybody votes. And the first thing we'll do is elect a chairman, so the motions are now available for those who would like to run for this chairman. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I'd like to make a recommendation or nomination. I first want to qualify by saying you've done a fantastic job leading this commission for years and this is in no means to say that you haven't. But what I'd like to do is I think it'd be a nice thing to start a transition while you could guide another chairman along. And with that being said, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Hopla to be chair to kind of start taking over. And then not to push you aside, but but just to have a change of leadership and also to have you around to help guide him for to do that. So again, not not saying you haven't done a wonderful job, I think you'd have for years. But what I'd like to do is is seek kind of succession. And so with that, I'm going to nominate Commissioner Hopla. Okay, it's still open. Anybody else like to make a motion?
I'll nominate Dale again.
Okay, there's two. Is there any more nominations? If not, we'll close them and we'll vote by roll call. Right? Then you say who you vote for when your name is called. You want to do that administrator? Again? Okay. Good. So as I call your name, then you will respond with which nominee that you'll be voting for and we'll just keep down to the end. All right. Chairman Ames?
I'll vote for myself.
Okay. Commissioner Bees?
Commissioner Hopla.
Okay. Commissioner Carlson?
Dale Ames.
Commissioner Hopla?
I'll vote for myself.
Okay. Commissioner Jorgensen?
Dale.
Commissioner Perrell?
Hopla.
Commissioner Lewis?
Dale Ames.
And Mayor Thelon, are you voting for him? No, not. All right.
Vote for Ames, vote for Hopla.
Okay. The next thing we're going to do is vote for the vice chairman. So now they we're open for the nomination for vice chairman. I nominate Harold Jorgensen.
I'll nominate Mr. Hopla.
Okay, we have the end of nominations. You see, the nominations CNN will call for the vote. Ask our administrator to read the roll call for the votes. All right, same process. Commissioner Ames, or excuse me, Chairman Ames? Commissioner Jorgensen? Commissioner Bees? Commissioner Hopla? Commissioner Carlson?
Dan Hopla.
Commissioner Hopla?
Myself.
Okay. Commissioner Jorgensen?
I think the votes are up for it.
Commissioner Perrell?
Hopla.
And Commissioner Lewis?
Hopla. Pick Hopla, one Jorgensen.
Okay. And Commissioner Jorgensen will be a vice chairman then. Oh, I'm sorry. The thing by my own. Okay, the next thing we're going to do is we need to vote most of the approved or amended tonight's meeting agenda from February twenty second to July twenty fourth. We need a motion for this. So we'd like to make motion?
I'll make a motion to set this agenda.
Commissioner Perrell made a motion. Do we have a second?
Well, seconds.
Okay, Commissioner Hopla seconded. He put a discussion on that. CNN will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried. The next thing on the agenda, we're going to approve tonight's Okay, the next thing is make a motion to approve or to amend the minutes from November twenty eight, twenty twenty three record meeting. Do we have a motion here?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Perrell made a motion. Do we have a second? A second. Commissioner Bees made the second. Does anybody just have any discussion on this? CNN will call for the vote. All those big of the aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, as we look at the agenda here, we have a public hearing tonight.
Mr. Chair? Yes.
Okay, you want to go?
So for those of you on the commission and those of you watching, if you haven't aren't aware yet, we have a new city planner, Cindy Nash, and I'll ask you to say just a little bit about your background. So I don't have your notes, but you can hear it. Sure. She'll be joining us now as part of this process. And so as we settle into some things that may be a little different than you had before, certainly Miss Nash has been identifying some things in our ordinances that we need to clean up. And so we've done some of that as a commission, but we welcome her for having as part of our team. Have all of her experience and certainly in the first month and a half we've been working together, it's been a an eye opening delight to see things that we need to clean up and to have a different perspective. While we appreciate the years that Ms. Stockman had given us. Well, we wish her well. We are glad to have Cindy with us now to move us forward. Cindy, could you give us just a little bit of background?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to meet all the members of the commission this evening. My name is Cindy Nash. I own Collaborative Planning. It's a one person firm, so you will only ever see me and not anybody else instead of me. I've been doing this as a consultant for about twenty years. Before that, I worked for a couple of different engineering companies and regional development commissions and a county as well doing municipal planning and development work. I serve a few different communities at the same time, so bring a lot of different perspectives and you know, from all of those experiences from all those different communities that I'm working with. But again, glad to be here, excited to join your team and also listening to all of you.
Thank you, Cindy. Welcome to our group here on the finding this zoning commission. Was it higher public hearing open now? Seven fourteen thirteen fourteen. And what we have on the agenda is IUP for home occupation, A one fifty Viking Boulevard. And this is John Himmelberger. And he wants to have solar solar. We put these on top of RVs. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn back to our planner now. She's going to present what she has information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean Himmelberger with Soda Solar has applied for an interuse permit for a home occupation on the property at A one fifty Viking Boulevard in northwest. That property is zone C one, commercial district. It has in the past had a home occupation, interuse permit on it for a couple of different uses in the past. And what they're proposing to do at this point is they're living there and they're also wanting to operate business that installs solar panels on RVs and I'll let them describe in more depth in a few minutes exactly what they do. I reviewed the application and a copy of the staff reports in your packet. In general, they can meet most of the requirements, I believe, of what's required for a home occupation. But the one catch is that when I was reviewing it, again, a lot of this is I'm looking at your ordinances with a fresh set of eyes. I've never seen this before, so I'm having to read everything, right? So there is in your ordinance that C one district does not have home occupations or extended home occupation listed as a either a permitted or interim use possible in your zoning district. Similarly, in your section on extended home occupations, it discusses that those are in the rural residential ag district. So while home occupations have been granted, it wasn't in the past on this property and probably some others in the community, it was not something that your ordinance actually allows to happen at this point. Basically, the way your ordinance is constructed, if a use is listed, you can ask for it. But there's also a section that specifically says if it's not listed, it's prohibited. So I am proposing that despite the otherwise, they basically will meet your requirements, that because your ordinance doesn't allow it at this point, that we table until your next meeting when we have time to prepare an ordinance amendment to address that. Because I do think it's probably your intent of the community to allow folks with properties like that to, if there is an existing house, to be able to do a home occupation. With that, that's all I have for this evening and I'll let the Himmelbergers explain what they're hoping to do and then we can hold a public hearing anybody for next month.
Yeah. What was that? Would you like to make any comments?
I can explain more about what we do if you'd like to hear it.
Yes.
Okay. So thank you for the introduction. Yes, my name is Sean Himmelberger. We started this business Soda Solar a couple of years ago out of our garage and it quickly exploded and it's been a lot of fun. We've been feeling it's taking us someplace and it's brought us here now and then where we so far we love being here. A little bit more about our business, what we do. Basically, we try and make RVs, work trailers, we even consult and help people with cabins, pretty much anything that they would like to have independent power systems on. And solar panels are part of that, but we also install lithium batteries and all the things that are required, inverters, chargers, all things are required to make anything like that work without running a generator. Actually, we've done some things with food trucks recently. Have you ever been a food truck thing or maybe at a farmer's market, a generator? We help them quieten them, so that's not an issue. It's really nice. As far as how things would be used there, typically somebody would come drop off their RV or trailer and leave it with us for anywhere for a couple of weeks. Sometimes we can even turn something even faster. We would perform most of the work when possible inside. Some RVs are large enough, some of these are forty six feet long and even as big as that building is that is there, it would not fit in there, so we would have to do some work outside. Ideally, we would do that behind the building where it's out of view. To that point, I think in the planning packet, we're proposing possibly adding some more trees to the front of it. Not that we certainly love being here, but we're kind of isolated as a we're kind of in a weird situation as a resident, so we wouldn't we were considering adding some pine trees to kind of give it more of a our yard a little bit more secluded feel. If there's no problem with that. We do have a couple of kids, a dog. Yeah. Sean, I can't think of anyone anymore that I'd like to add at the moment. If you have an answer or a question, anybody have any?
Okay, we're going to do some other things. If you sit down, we'll have questions later here. Okay, I'm going to ask now if the clerk is verified the legal publications, mailings and postings. Has that been completed?
It has.
It has, okay. Okay, so that's taken care of. And so the next thing we're going to do is if the PZ has any questions they'd like to ask our captain, get it about what he wants to do over there. As you know, right now, we couldn't allow it because of the way our ordinance is, but our planner suggested that we table this, we'd have a public hearing at our next meeting, change our ordinance and also to act upon it. So it'd take a it's going to take another month.
Okay.
Okay, just for your information, as you probably all know, that was a transmission town here in the in the town, I know, and he was there for a number of years and he retired, so it was good to hear somebody bought it and came in with some business. And also, I'm not sure, Mayor, how this worked out because over here, it was the same thing on Greenberg's. That used to be an office space and they made it into a house where somebody lived in. Was our ordinance changed there or anything?
What we're cleaning there though, there's a few places like that in town.
Okay, that'd be taken care of with the
Ordinance amendment.
Okay, the ordinance amendment. I wasn't sure because I know we did this and I'm not sure.
Oh, there's a few places like that.
That'll be taken care of that thing.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
How many, and maybe it's in your business, how many deliveries per day or per week and are these solar panels large enough or are you going to have big rigs coming in there? How do you get what you need to be able to do something?
Yeah, typically, I would say nineteen out of twenty times, we're not getting anything larger than a normal FedEx or UPS truck. There are rare instances, I think we where we get something larger, let's say maybe larger solar panels. But where it would come on a box truck. Typically, we can work with our suppliers to deliver on more like a box truck that's not an articulated tractor trailer where they would have problems getting it out. As far as, like I said, a number, I mean, we probably have something coming in and out or we would about every day or so, one one way or another, but to tell you the truth, so many of us are buying things on Amazon or doing things anyway, something's coming anyway.
I wasn't sure if you were having to have larger trucks in and out of there, whether it would be, is the plan to have a product start inside then?
Ah, yes.
Thank you. I believe I heard today that this season has to build anything over a hundred dollars is going to have to get fifty cents for that goes to the state and I'm not sure where else it goes. Have you heard anything about that?
It's July first.
July first, I'm sorry, July first.
They don't change it last year regardless. Delivery charges. Any delivery charge is going to be a fifty cent additional charge on orders that value more than a hundred dollars. Last year, legislature put it in seventy five cents for everything and modified it to fifty cents for over a hundred dollars. They could change that this year, but right now the fifty cents starts July first. Anyway, that's going to get passed on to you.
I was sort of surprised when I heard that. But anyway, I got a question on these solar panels, when you put them on top of your vehicles, do you have to put them in?
Typically, we mount them flat on the roof. We do have tilt kits that we can install for some people if they would like to tilt them. So most of the time it's flat on these.
Because if they're not flat, you'd have a lot of wind resistance and stuff on them. But then big vehicle, what do you?
Yeah, typically. For the most part, it comes to a kind of a practicality standpoint of having to go up there and tilt them. When you get someplace, most people don't want to do that, so we just try and put as much as we can on there. That usually works out pretty good. Otherwise, they tilt them at the back of the machine so they don't pop the wheels on those things. Now, if when you drive by, take a look in the back, I have my our personal RV is back there. It's completely covered in solar and some of them are. Got the pictures we have here? There might be some on there. We got pictures of the panel leaves. Okay, yeah. But you can see our personal RV from the road coming on biking from west.
Your intention is to make a turnaround back there because those are such a big vehicle.
Yes.
And there's plenty of room back there for that.
Yeah.
Would you be putting anything within that circle where you turn around then?
Not nothing permanent. We have considered allowing, so let's say typically when someone we were to, if we were to do an installation on somebody's RV, sometimes they need some time to get used to it. So our one of, one thing that we've been playing around with is the idea of perhaps letting somebody stay a night after their job is completed back there and basically boondock as if they are out of the wilderness somewhere and if something goes wrong, we're right there. We can help them out and walk them through whatever issue they may have and then they can be on their way.
Does anybody else on the commission have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Hopla?
So you said you install on remote sites to people's cabins or?
We have in the past.
Is that a small percent of your business or most are going to be done here?
I would like most of it to be done here. My wife is here and she doesn't like when I travel and I don't like to travel with her coming to there. So our, our plan would be to not have to travel for it much. I believe we have some language in there that we do offer online sales as well and maybe that's what you're getting at. For the most part, those online sales are drop ship, so we just provide the consulting and putting together what people may need and in the end it gets shipped directly to their location and never comes here at all.
Okay, so you receive the product and reship it back out to someone else?
No, most times we never even receive it.
Okay.
We just act as the middleman or just coordinating where it should go from a warehouse, anywhere in the country to where it needs to go.
Any more questions we have here in the finding this one? If not, I'll open up to the jury of your audience. Someone's asking questions, making comments. You're certainly welcome.
I see Don is a back bear in the business. We need him.
We, we had your name for our records.
Brian Powell, play with the legend. It's a good business to have, nice to meet him. Like I said, he needs a man. Someone's over that property and we can get him in, get him in so he can get working and get the stuff done.
Well, he was born and sold around.
Yes. Very brave people.
Any more questions here from the finding this one? The end on the like our planner suggests that we table this and we'll also have a, because the next meeting will have an ordinance to work on to make so this system like this will work in our, in our city and and also we will put together a plan. We don't have to extend the public hearing.
No.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
Clarify, if you're taking it, if you want to take the public hearing open, we have to threaten the public hearing should be March twenty sixteen.
You can continue and take more comments.
Remember comments on the city ordinance. I doubt there'll be more than we have to make.
If I can say for this, continue.
Just to continue, okay. Somebody like to make a motion to continue this meeting for next finding this one?
Mr. Chair, I'd like a motion to continue the public hearing.
Commissioner Hopla made a motion to some.
Let him finish because you got to do part eight times specific, so after seven PM on March twenty sixth.
Continue to the March meeting. So it would be after the
So after seven PM, March twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth, so probably four.
So we have a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Bees seconded. We have any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This will be going to the city council.
Any more questions?
Okay, any more, yeah. Okay, what we do is now continue on.
Any questions for the final? Will this be allowed if we, if we want someone living at the site?
Great questions. So the ordinance.
Can you repeat your question?
Yeah.
This application we permitted it, there was some, nobody living at the site. This is great commercial application.
Potentially, yes. But the homes also can't be there, so it has to be a complete turnover to commercial them. And I don't think that home is in that stage of its life cycle yet, so the way the ordinance is, it kind of has to be one or the other at the moment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I mean, could the house act as the business location if they were not occupying it? I mean, that's
The way I'm going from memory, the way of the ordinance is there can't be a house then anymore and they are living there, so.
Right. And I know it's, maybe it's better brought up at the next one, but I'm just thinking what, what distinguishes a house from a office building, you know?
Sure, so it's, yeah, it's going to be that it has everything that you would need to reside as a dwelling unit in it.
No, a lot of office buildings have everything you need to be there.
Maybe, yeah, maybe they do, but it, you know, it's definitely, it's being used as a house.
And the reason I ask is there have been dwellings that have been converted, right, to like an auto sales place where formerly was a house or a restaurant that was formerly a house. So I'm just wondering if that's something that should be thought about as we think about this ordinance change.
Yeah, we'll certainly talk about that too. And there's actually quite a few other things in that home occupation section of the ordinance that we'll talk about next month. But at least as it impacts this property, they want to live there and.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mayor. So along those lines, what we've thought of in the past is if a residence in the municipal district is used for commercial purposes, you take a residence you start using for an office building for the shop you have next door, it can never go back to residence.
Sure.
So we've thought about that before. And we didn't think about the distinction that a residence, you can keep a residence as long as it continues to be a residence, either yours or rented as a residence. Or rented as a residence. So say on the corner here with fellow Wood.
Right.
That was, the homeowner was living there and running wood business. He's moved out, continues to rent the house, so it's still staying as a residence. On a commercial property.
Sure.
What we did recognize was Cindy found was that we don't have that as a permitted use in the commercial district. So we've done it in a number of places here. Corner House has a similar thing going. Business is being run in the whole building, but they're living in the house. So we just have to straighten that out. Once the house is used commercially, then we know it can't do. But we did make it clear that you could live there and have another use on the property. You know, we have two principal uses, residence and business, and we didn't realize that ordinance hasn't been modified. It it should be a relatively simple cleanup to be consistent with what we intend to do and are doing around here.
Yeah, and and to be fair right now, we have a limited number of residences in C one, right? So.
And and being as an IUP, if somebody else would come in or another business, it it changes anyway. It 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 has to issue another IUP.
Correct, because it'll be specific to their business and use.
The 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 whole thing is say, say their house was burned down and didn't want to build, they lose their IUP, right?
They could rebuild under their current.
It is after the build, right?
They they could rebuild the house.
Yeah.
Originally, when it was a township, if you lost it to fire or storm, more than fifty percent, you couldn't rebuild. We changed that in our C one usage. So they could, they could rebuild or they could add on. But our intention is to, as long as you want to keep living in the house, then we'd like to be able to make sure that I am.
Did we vote?
Yep.
And we did vote on, okay, so. So you understand what's gonna happen is you'll, you'll have to come back at our next meeting and we'll we'll act upon it because our ordinance right now. We're not denying and we're just gonna try to change our orders, make it right.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chair. I'm asking for the city council meeting.
I'm going to say the council, maybe.
Yeah, should he be?
Presuming that you you recommend it after March eight.
Okay, you go to the city council meeting and find out what they recommend.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I guess one more question is, you know, with their application, the and 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 I appreciate them following the process for, you know. What they need to do here. Can we allow the the operation of the business until such time? That it either passes or is denied or changed?
No, you can't.
Okay, so I guess let me ask this. For someone who. Has operated a business without an IUP and has not asked for that IUP. And they come forward and request that, we generally give them the benefit of the doubt and let them operate. Until such time as it's been decided.
So there's a difference between saying somebody can go ahead and do something that wouldn't be needed in the ordinance right now because they don't have an IUP in hand? And whether or not the city would choose to take enforcement action and that would be.
Okay, so I mean, I'm gonna go back to the storage, the request for outdoor storage. When the stuff was already moved on the property, was being stored there and was allowed to be there for months. Even though we didn't pass, you know, and and I need to to allow them to do that. But we're gonna deny someone who's following the right process to do it until it's passed. Is there any way to extend permission until such time?
There isn't, there is nothing in your ordinance that wouldn't allow you to do a temporary, if you will, permission. Like I said, it would be up to the city as to whether or not they wanted to um take any enforcement action.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mayor.
I think in the cases you're you're talking about, the leased land that we had recently and there were some others that. Um, we have property on forty seven, I said, how long you been doing it? Four, three years and we just realized we have to get an IUP.
Right.
Those are kind of after the fact, they were doing it.
Right.
Then found out and came in, I'm Himmelberger's, but even let's do it the right way. I I don't know, you can manage to lay forward.
It it seems wrong to.
Or strictly, if you know anything, but you're like, oh my. I'm assuming you're not gonna be bringing a bunch of vehicles in this point. What? I'm assuming you're not gonna be bringing a bunch of vehicles in this point.
Um, for the next uh, uh, for the next little bit here, we, I think we're gonna be heading out on spring break. For most of March, or a good portion of March anyway, so it probably won't affect us all a lot. Um, but. Um, anything you could do would be helpful. Would you have more interest rate?
Would your neighbor be willing to possibly lend a little space if you needed to do some work until it was approved? I would just like to see someone.
Help me take over.
Okay. I I would just like to see someone who's going about things the right way, not get punished and and people who. Are naive of what they need to do and still operate. You know?
Yeah, the caution I always have is 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 to the commissioner, to the council. When you make decisions, you set precedent.
Right.
And anybody else will come in and ask for the same treatment. She's wanna make sure you're consistent. I I understand that. You know, they have a mortgage to pay and and.
Yeah.
And it's unfortunate that our ordinances aren't what they should have been.
Yeah.
And I I I don't punish them for that.
But I also don't want to encourage people to ignore the system and figure, okay, I'll operate for a year before applying. Because then I can keep operating until it's approved. So we we encourage that behavior. By not having something that allows someone to have a temporary use. So.
Getting back to the the rent facilities from his neighbor, I don't know if we could really do that. I don't, uh.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So I'm not sure what your ordinances would say and what existing permits the neighbor has or I I can't speak to whether that is something that. We can suggest either tonight, so.
I I understand that the situation is in with uh. And I understand what you're trying to say, Commissioner B's, that uh. They aren't treating everybody fair. And the biggest thing is, yes, we've had some people in the past that in operation illegally until somehow. Our planner, even mayor, so we could find out. And then in the past, it uh, they they weren't doing things till somebody had. Found out what they were doing. And we we hate to be the person that turns people in, you know.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner.
Well, I'd like to make sure this is gonna be inside their uh their sixty day review period extension. Is that gonna be in time for the April meeting?
Let's see.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yes, it will be in time. And we've all already sent out the extension letter. Okay.
I think our applicant, he understands where we're coming from, what we have to do as far as get our orders in order for.
Yes, I understand that. Uh, just for the record, we did, uh, when we purchased this property, I think it was December fifteen. Um, I was in contact with Liz Stockman and even before we purchased to try and make plans as soon as possible because. I was able to foresee some of the issues, having to go through planning and and the IUP approval process. Because we made that mistake where we were at before. We did exactly what you were talking, we just, actually, we we didn't know, it was pure ignorance. So we wanted to start things out on the right foot here and I appreciate you uh understanding that and uh. So it has been a long time, or we started that in December and here we are. Uh, late February, but I I understand that things have to go the way they have to go. No, I mean.
Well, until you got on a agenda, we didn't have anything on the agenda, so we we didn't have any means, so.
Oh, I I understand. This is nobody's fault.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned.
Okay, let's go on. Does our planner have, there's no more, no business, I think. Is there anything old business in the future or?
No, the only thing we wanted to discuss with you is a date for your December meeting because um.
Tell them they don't need December.
Yeah, okay. Um, and that's fine. It's, it can be a challenge if an application comes in because. They they were unfortunately caught in a bind, you know, for other reasons with us not having a January meeting. But um if anybody applied in a unfortunate timing in same late November, they would have to be told January.
If if there is that, we haven't run into that. We did one year. Um, and so we called a meeting for that.
Okay.
Uh, we would have to consider because right now that fourth uh Tuesday is uh Christmas Eve and.
Yeah.
Week later is New Year's Eve and so potentially if we had to do something, it would be the seventeenth of February. But we have, we ran into it one year, they had to have it, and then they didn't use it anyways. But we we leave it open if there is something on the agenda to schedule something. It typically is Christmas week, so.
And that and that's why we wanted to bring it up, because we were working on calendars for um. Uh, uh, candles for applicants so that they, when they had to apply by to make sure the meeting, so we wanted to discuss the December meeting.
It typically in December, we follow a meeting for a specific agenda. Like you said, in sixteen years, we've done it once.
Okay.
Okay, that's all we got then?
Yeah.
Okay, uh. I hate to tell you, but um, welcome to motion for adjournment.
Make the motion to adjourn.
If I'm not gonna continue, if I'm seconded.
I seconded.